For the pledge of allegiance.
Good morning, I'm Pastor Ted Bojanik, I'm shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church. I have a brief prayer followed by the Lord's Prayer. If you wish to pray the Lord's Prayer with me, that would be fine. Almighty God, we give thanks that you provide for the work of the city through the various gifts of the members of this council. Help us recognize and act on every opportunity for service. Guide us by your Spirit that everything we think, say, and do may be for the common good of our community through your Son Jesus Christ, our Lord. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you, be safe. Thank you Pastor. Item four ceremonial matters, proclamations and employee recognition. I know we have one proclamation. And let's do that first, and then we'll do the employee recognition. This is Molly Long, tell me your position, I know you're with the Daughters.
Um, daughters of the King. Um, oh, I'm in the American History Essay Contest Chair.
And this is, uh, Dr. Andrew.
Yes, here in Fredericksburg.
And you have a, a position?
No, I'm just the one who was asked to do this. Honestly, they, everybody was busy, so I thought, oh, I'll go do it.
Good. Well, here's the proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, with its liberties embodies the principles of limited government that a republic dedicated to rules by law. And whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to afford official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations that will commemorate. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designate September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Gerald Luther, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Fredericksburg, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of Fredericksburg, urging all citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigilant protecting freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our lives.
Thank you very much. We're going to be very busy during that week. We have a Constitution luncheon which you all are all invited to attend on Wednesday, September the 20th at 11:30 at Lady Bird Park, the Grill, the Grill area. And it's a joint meeting with the Kerrville Unit, Major James Kerr Chapter. Our speaker is Lieutenant General Mike Oates, U.S. Army retired. And we will be distributing booklets of the Constitution to all the schools in the area. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I need pictures.
Yes, sir Mayor. So no employee recognitions today, but Lieutenant Seelig is here to introduce a couple new police department officers.
Good morning Mayor, Council. I have two employees that I would like to introduce to the council this morning. There are two newest officers with Fredericksburg Police Department. The first one is Umberto Luna. He's not new to the city, but he is new to the police department. He graduated from the ACOG Regional Academy this last August 17th. He is from Fredericksburg and attended Fredericksburg High School where he was active in FFA. He went to school after, after attending high school at Tulsa Welding School and began working for the city in public works before applying with the police department. Some interesting things about Bird as he goes by is he enjoys saltwater fishing, kayaking, and hunting. And he wanted to become an officer because that's someone as a young child he looked up to. And he wanted to become an officer when he grew up. Trevor Mason is our other new officer. He is born and raised, comes to us from Pierceall, Texas. He joined the Marine Corps after high school where he served four years. And then after getting back, he went to Austin and served as a salesman. After living in Austin, he wanted to move closer to family, so he went back to Pierceall where he went to work in jail and wanted to serve his community as an officer. Decided that once he had the opportunity to go to the academy while working as a jailer, he was going to take advantage of it. He loves the Fredericksburg area and is glad to join the community.
Welcome gentlemen, thanks.
Both Bird and Tripp.
Glad to have you here, thank you. Jeanette, you signed up to speak on the proclamation, I'll give you three.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate that you do this every year. There's probably besides the Bible, no more important document than our Constitution. We not only have the Constitution, we also have 50 state constitutions. And many of the states were formed before the Constitution and wrote their constitutions. But they all say the same thing. They all basically protect the rights of the people, their declared rights, rights that we already have. And so I just encourage everyone to take a look at your state constitution. Not everybody reads the state constitution as well as the Constitution. And I encourage the, um, the council, especially with things that are coming up in the world, which is possibly going to be a repeat of what we went through a couple of years ago. They're talking about the masks and the vaccines and all, shutting down businesses and all that. So I implore the council to really consider and understand that your, your job description is in the Constitution. You took an oath to uphold it, protect it, and that means the people's rights. That's the whole reason that Constitution was written, was to tell the government, you protect the people's rights, you don't take it away. So any pressure that might come down here, we ask you to stand for the Constitution, which is the highest law of the land and the state constitution as well. No one has the authority to infringe on the rights of the people. No government agency, no government, no governor, they can't say you have to wear a mask or you have to shut down your business. All of those rights are ours, freedom of assembly, freedom of speech, liberties, all of that. So I want to support you and encourage you to be ready and hold strong. Thank you.
Thank you. I will. No, no, I only had one person sign up, so go ahead Jeanette.
Right. Um, well, thank you for the opportunity. I would like to speak about future agenda items, which would be the budget. And people cannot claim their God-given right to own property as they continue to rent their property from local governments. There are ways to correct this, starting with spending less. And I'm, a responsible budget sets a maximum threshold based on the average taxpayer's ability to pay for it, which is best represented by a fiscal rule of a spending limit with the rate of population growth plus inflation. Of course, this growth is a maximum as the budget really should be frozen or even cut for most governments given their spending excesses over time. And then I'm going to quote kind of liberally from the Huffines Liberty Foundation. Local governments must spend less and eliminate their property taxes. This should at least include imposing a reasonable local budget that increases by no more than the rate of population growth plus inflation. Local governments should impose this on themselves. This would force cities to prioritize spending better and make essential modifications or cuts where needed. And it would protect taxpayers from higher property taxes to fund excessive spending. Doing so would result in surpluses at the local level because tax revenues from sales taxes and fines and because tax revenues from sales taxes and fines and fees generally increase faster than this fiscal rule. The surpluses should be returned to taxpayers by buying down their own property taxes until they are zero, which could also take about a decade. Over time, this process of competition would help eliminate, and I'm going to repeat that word, eliminate all property taxes in Texas. Thank you for your attention.
Jeanette, who, where was that quote from?
It's the Huffines.
Okay, thank you. The item for future agendas is way, is down the, for us, is way down the agenda here, but I'm happy to indulge you at this point, since you requested. Item number five is council comments. Anyone?
One thing, on the 25th, Councilmember Kirshner and I had the pleasure of sitting in for you at Chip Roy's event in Johnson City. He had an open house town hall, which is kind of interesting. A lot of national commentary. I think that's quite frankly, the sound bites you might see on some television stations. And then we had a small leadership roundtable. And again, I was thinking national items, but really the subject was 90% water, I think, was the greater part of the conversation. So that's, that's all I have.
99.9% water. I think you're the only one who brought up other topics. But it was a good time to visit with leaders from Lanco County, Johnson City. Who was there? There was Ellen Troxler's staff was there and several of Chip Roy's staff. Clinton and I were in Marble Falls at the end of last month for the Hill Country Leadership Institute, talking about Tech Dot. We had our district engineer and area engineer there as well as the deputy director for Tech Dot. Got to talk a lot about just regional issues when it comes to roads. Since we last met for our regular meeting, we've had two budget meetings, and we'll have another one this afternoon. We had the community childcare conversation that the chamber hosted over at Holy Ghost. The Las B County Fair, I think, was a huge success despite the heat. And that's all I have.
I guess, talking about water, I saw in the paper last week where someone made a comment in a letter to the editor about people with green lawns. Well, mine's pretty brown right now. And I saw them most in the neighborhood. What's interesting, he brought up, and apparently we need to reiterate just because in my area where I live, there are some wells. But you can, the ordinance applies to private wells, whatever. And I do have a couple of yards in my neighborhood that I know they got a, either they're ignoring the ordinance or they think they're okay by watering with their own private well. And if you live in the city, I don't care if you have a private well, the ordinance applies to everybody. So it's just a reminder, and I'm kind of curious now that I've seen two pretty nice green lawns in my neighborhood, that they're doing that or what. I'm not quite sure. But everybody should have a brown or a lot of brown spots at this time in your yard. So it's just a reminder.
Mr. Watson, you have anything to say?
No comment.
With most, item six is the consent agenda. And this is the considering approval of meetings in August. August 9, joint special meeting with planning and zoning. August 10, joint budget work session with the county. August 15, a regular meeting. And August 17, work session.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Thank you. All right. We'll go into item seven A. This is to receive a presentation on the City Council's duties and responsibilities regarding development and construction. Just to set the table a little bit before I turn it over to City Attorney Mick McCamey. Council, if you're like me, you're getting responses from various citizenry asking with regard to water, why are we allowing all of these houses and apartments and a car wash and so on and so forth when we keep talking about the shortage of water and stage four and so forth? There's no doubt that there is a need for more information out there to help people understand what the processes are, what our legal limits are to say yes or no to various developments that come before us, especially P and Z. Well, I mean, obviously, P and Z. It's the ones that we get from P and Z. They see these apartments going up. I dropped by on my way home, the ones out by First United Bank, the second or third phase, whatever that was, of Orchard, is it Orchard Grove? Is that what it's called? Yeah. And on the one hand, we talk about housing and needing housing for people who work here. You know, so we're building some housing. But people are concerned, are we being judicious in our approval? Do we understand what that means to our water supply? Are we being caught off guard? So I wanted Mick to brief us on what our obligations and responsibilities are. Mick, one question, I'll turn it over to you. One question I get all the time is, well, can't y'all just say no? Can't, when something comes before you, can you just say, well, it meets the requirements. It meets our land use. It meets our zoning, but we just don't want it. Then there are people who, excuse me, believe that that's what we ought to be doing. So if that's a good setup, I'm going to turn it over to you, and thank you. I don't at all, please.
Good morning. What I've done, Mayor, today is just done a brief presentation, PowerPoint presentation, to serve as a basis for discussion. It's more general overview of strategies to manage growth in a city like a homeless city in Texas. And as we go, the most useful part of this, I think, is if you stop me and ask questions, we'll talk about particular tools, particular devices. This is more of a general overview of the type of strategies you can create for growth management. First of all, let me point out what you just said, Mayor, about citizens saying, well, just say no, or why don't we do a moratorium? Or why don't we stop those apartments next to my house? All those things. This community is part, is a very strong part of property rights community in Texas. The whole state is. But of course, the German-settled communities, especially in the Hill Country, are even stronger in that regard. Generally, everyone has a right to use their property for whatever they want. In a urban area such as we have here, even though it's a small urban area, it's still a city. We do have the power to do some regulation to counterveil that property, absolute property rights in order to create the environment for the community we want. It is, our ability to do that is limited not only by the Fifth Amendment right to use the property the way you want to under the Constitution, but also Texas state laws, which are very development-oriented and property rights-oriented. So you do not have the right to say no. You have the right to do reasonable regulation to encourage managed growth. And I'm going to go over some of those tools. But let me first start by saying something that's pretty obvious to people, and I think in Fredericksburg and a lot of the Hill Country communities, is our traditional method of managing growth in our communities. At least large residential growth, like subdivisions, has been our ability to ration water and sewer resources. And we still do that. That tool is going to go away. As you probably know already, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality liberally grants developers in water districts the right to build their own sewer plants. Now, that's something that hasn't been sold forever. It is now, however. And then also, the legislature has made it very easy, as opposed to what it used to be even 10 years ago, to create a water control and improvement district to get water contracts and gain water, so they wouldn't necessarily need city water. We've always denied, or not denied, but made it difficult for large developments to get city water and sewer without something in exchange, such as annexation in the city and signing development agreements and things like that. That is still our, one of our basic tools for managing growth in Fredericksburg. It is going away. It will go away because, as I mentioned, they're going to be able to bring their own water and sewer. Let's just go through the slide if we can, Eric, and then we can go through particular tools. What I wanted to talk about is implementing, if you can go to the next slide, Eric, real quickly. Growth management involves implementing policies to manage and control the pace of development. By controlling the pace of development, you're not necessarily slowing it down. You're trying to make a steady development so the city can react, incorporate development into your community and into your citizenry. That can help maintain your community character. One of the major things in Fredericksburg, as we all know, ensure sustainable growth. That means growth that you can continue to serve with your current resources, reasonable resources advancement in the future, and mitigate negative impacts on infrastructure, environment, and quality of life. We have great quality of life programs here in Fredericksburg that fast growth is, that has a pace that is more than we want to have, that we can't manage, just takes that over. And your quality of life can degenerate very quickly. So I'm going to go through some tools, not necessarily in order of importance, that we use in strategies to develop growth in Texas homeless cities. Most important, this is the priority, the comprehensive plan, which you're working on. It serves as the guidebook for everything you do for the next 10 years or more in the city. Designed to incorporate the interests of the community into your land use policies, your transportation planning, infrastructure requirements, and to some extent, environmental considerations. Although, as I'll talk in a minute, we have very, very few environmental, much environmental authority as a city in Texas. Okay, Eric? Importantly, to implement your comprehensive plan in the land use program you want is your zoning regulations. You want to have those zoning ordinances to be strong and enforced, enforceable and enforced, to limit high-density development and to encourage and incentivize low-impact, sustainable projects. Low-impact development incentives, providing, it's kind of a carrot and a stick thing. We do that a lot in our zoning ordinance to give even single-family developers or individual homeowners incentives to do low-impact development as opposed to high-density development. We'll talk in a few minutes about some of the problems we have with not providing some high-density development as it relates to housing. Infrastructure assessment. Prioritize maintaining and upgrade existing infrastructure over expansion. Includes roads, public transportation, water, sewer, and drainage systems. Drainage in my list, sure that. You know, Chris and his gang do a whole good job. It's a game, right? They do a great job of keeping up on this. And you have what I consider a very good program for identifying these issues. But infrastructure assessment is a major issue in growth management. You've all heard and seen Texas cities over the years completely engulfed by inability to keep up with the infrastructure. Hutto's an example. Frisco, 20 years ago. It can happen here. And you just have to maintain as much monitoring and adjustment to that as we can all the time. And I think you do a pretty good job of that, what I've seen. Next, green space and parks. This is a critical issue. It probably is easy to see that when you have a robust program for development of your park system and incentivize the creation of green spaces in all residential subdivision developments and commercial development, it clearly helps on the low-density end of your management. Let me add, though, green space and parks cost money. You can have a park, your park dedication ordinance, so if a subdivision wants to develop in your community, you can require dedication of parkland or creation of a park development fund in lieu of dedication of land. And that's an important tool. But everywhere you can build in buffers and green space in your development reasonably, obviously cuts down on density and makes it, makes it an important tool. But it costs you money to develop parks. And you have to be willing to make that investment. Historic preservation. This is called preaching to the choir in Fredericksburg. You have professional historic preservation officer. And you have a certified planner. You have a very strong historic review board. And your ordinances are some of the best in Texas as far as historic preservation. So you've already shown a commitment to that type of growth management. It helps not only create the cultural identity of the city, but it creates a culture in the community for persons coming in from outside the community to do any kind of development to know, hey, we're in this town. We've got to do this. And it creates kind of a feeling and an atmosphere where they don't want to invade on your historic identity. May not be an ordinance written like that, but it creates a culture in your community. And I think the investment in historic preservation in Fredericksburg has done a lot to help manage the growth here over the years.
I'll ask you a question at this point.
Yes, sir.
With regard to that, are you talking about people who come in with developments outside the historic district? That they might have that?
Yes, I'm talking about the entire community. Because the character of your community is, this is a lot of the identity of your community is based in your historic preservation commitment. And that creates an environment for all development, not just in the districts. And I think you probably have benefited from that over the years with your strong ordinance and boards and enforcement. The next item may be the most important. Community engagement. Residents have to be engaged in all of your growth management tools and buy into it. If they don't, they don't work. And so it requires constant community engagement. Even when the community may be turned off for now, you know, they come and go as far as interest goes. You have to put it out there, all these tools out there, and get your community to engage. You've seen that in the comprehensive plan development, but it needs to be in everything. It needs to be in your historic preservation. You have a lot of input from your citizens that I've observed in your meetings. And you do a lot of town hall work, all that kind of stuff. You can't let up on that. Because if you lose community engagement, even on one of the tools, it can, it can affect your strategy negatively. So I think community engagement is extremely important in every one of these items I'm talking about. Your community has to buy into it. And one reason they have to, this isn't free. Growth management is not a free process. It's not, oh, let's write, let's do this paper. Let's adopt this ordinance, and then we're done. You have to invest money, resources, budget to do every one of these strategies. And you have to be willing to do it and have the communities backing for that tax rate to pay for it or utility cost to pay for it. There's no other way around it. It's not free. Affordable housing, the next item. You know, it's interesting. I've seen some citizens speak, and I, and it's great that they're coming in, being engaged in this, that housing is not a city function. That's false. Housing is a city function. Your ability to assist and encourage, to encourage... Your ability to assist and encourage, assist in providing and encourage private, the private sector to provide housing for your low and moderate income persons. And of course here, workforce housing is a city mission. It's a governmental function. And it also costs money. But affordable housing of all income levels has to be part of your growth management scheme. It's possible for you to look, end up like Highland Park, the Westlake Hills. That would destroy your community character as an example. Because that would all be two acre lots, high end, multi, very expensive properties. You don't want that. You want to be a complete community. So your growth is available to all income levels and that means housing has to be addressed.
Mick, can I ask you a couple of questions there?
Yes, sir.
This is going back a couple of slides, but one was incentives for low impact sustainable projects. And I had called Port Aransas and asked how, how did they do it? And basically a couple of limited levers are easements, setbacks, and density. So one question is, what additional incentives could we provide to encourage building lower cost affordable housing? And then the second question is, we have 50 single family homes starts each year on average. Would you characterize us as slow growth?
50? Yeah. It's not fast growth, I don't believe, no, for a single family residential. I think, but that can change overnight, obviously. If, when you start, when you tie all these things together and you try to provide the housing stock for your community, which is everyone in your community, you can get into a fast growth mode if you don't manage that right. Like if you make a lot of, a particular type of housing available quickly, then all of a sudden you have a whole lot of people coming in for that housing. And you don't necessarily have the infrastructure and schools and cover that. So you have to tie all these together. As far as, there are development tools you can have in your zoning ordinance and in your subdivision ordinance that rewards certain types of low impact development and allows for speedier processing of their applications, allows for benefits in the development agreement. If there's low impact development, it sounds like that's what Port Aransas is trying to do. So you can definitely, I think the place for you guys to really work on that issue is when your comprehensive plan's in place and you start enacting the tools to implement it, which would include zoning and subdivision regulations. Anyway, I wanted to emphasize that housing issue because it is part of your mission to help different people live here. The next one is impact fees. Charging developers fees based on the impact of their projects on public services and infrastructure. Impact fees, as you know, are important because when a development, whether commercial or residential, impacts your utility services in a particular way, they should contribute for that. And there's a complex set of rules and engineering programs that perform that. We do that here in Fredericksburg. I think it's important to keep that current. The state law requires you to revisit your impact fee ordinance within a certain period of time. And I think you probably could speed that up some more often.
Mick, are impact fees regulated?
They are by the state. You can only adopt impact fees based on engineering studies related to how much of a contribution to the cost of the infrastructure is generated by particular development. And we do that with engineering studies. I'm just encouraging that you would do that on a timely basis to make sure they're up to date and you're recovering the cost for especially your utility customers instead of subsidizing development. Until we could charge impact fees in Texas about 30 years ago, cities subsidized development. Now we try not to. We try to make sure that your, especially utility ratepayers are maybe not made whole, but they're at least not subsidizing commercial or residential development. So I think it's very important to make sure you don't miss your windows for updating those. I think we do a good job of that, Chris.
Yeah, I would just add that the last time the impact fees were studied, that was approved by council was 2019. 2019, yes, sir.
So we're required to review them every five years and just make sure you do it. It's all because you don't want to subsidize. If you start subsidizing development, that's how you lose some management tools.
I was just curious if we could use impact fees to slow down development.
You can't make it penal. You can't make it a punitive fee. It has to be tied to those engineering costs. And there is a range of the fees that you can adopt based on those studies like Chris was talking about. Some cities go to the lower end of that range in order to encourage some development areas they want. If you want to do more management, you should be right on the money on those numbers to make sure you're not subsidizing.
Impact fees set with the lifespan of the project in mind? Or is it just a lump sum upfront?
It's set on a community wide basis. And so each particular development would be plugged into that formula to see how much it would cost for, to support the infrastructure, installation of the infrastructure when they build.
The assumption that there's a fee, that the fee is attached to the lifespan somehow of that neighborhood development or apartment complex.
Yeah, it's based on the development of those utilities for that service. Whenever they put it in, the way it works is it's assessed at the time they plat or get their permissions to build. And then it's not paid until they actually get a building permit or something like that.
Well, then I understand that, that it's the upfront development cost.
Yes.
I'm talking about long-term maintenance and sustaining.
Not really. It's really based on the installation of the infrastructure. So that's your, your, your single family ratepayer, water payer, customer isn't paying for those water lines out there.
Is that a lever that we could pull if we wanted to incentivize a certain kind of development? Or does it need to be standard across?
That has to be standard. Otherwise it'd be discriminatory.
Gotcha.
So given the fact that it sounds like it's been four years since we've adjusted post-COVID, as we all know, everything's more expensive, should we take a second look at where we're at rather than wait five years?
Yeah, we can certainly form the committee that, obviously we hire a firm to help us with those calculations, identify the projects, and then a committee makes a recommendation to council. That committee is community members. Last time we had one member from the ETJ, since our utilities, the thought is the utility eventually would extend into the ETJ. So we can certainly take a look at that next year or for sure the following year, if not next year.
Thank you. Yeah, and what Chris has described is the state, state process, state set due process for changing your impact fees. Transportation planning. Prioritize public transportation. That's one of the standard planning tools to help manage growth in communities and also create quality of life aspects. Pedestrian, bike friendly infrastructure, reduce dependence on cars. Of course, not many Texans understand that, reducing dependence on cars. And lower the demand for expanding roads. Transportation planning is part of your comprehensive planning process. But your transportation plan's very important. It can, you know, the old saying, if you build it, they will come. There's some truth to that in transportation planning. And so the more cognizant you can be of where those arterials are going, are going to be in the future and residential streets are going to be. If you keep in mind the managed growth aspect of that, that's an important part of transportation planning. You know, we always in the transportation plans describe areas in the ETJ and others for connectivity of major thoroughfares. Here in Fredericksburg, we have so many state highways, it's a little different than most places. But, and you get some pushback from people in the county and in the outline community about having lines on a map where it might be a road someday, but you have to do that because otherwise you can have chaotic development outside your city limits, which doesn't help anyone. Periodic review. Important to review and adjust growth policies. And that's different from reviewing your comprehensive plan. It's different from looking at your transportation plan. It's different than looking at zoning amendments. It's growth management. It's an agenda item of its own. And the cities that have dealt with overwhelming growth successfully have made it that. So you don't leave it to chance and maybe this will fit into our growth management strategy, maybe it won't. It brings it top of mind that, okay, it's the third quarter, it's time for our growth discussion. I think that's an important part of all this. In addition to periodic review and adjustment of your policies as your community changes. You know, every time we have a P and Z meeting, the members sit around and talk about how much things have changed and what's going on in the community. So even though to a lot of people, Fredericksburg may feel the same community, may feel the same identity. It's not. It's changing and we have to review and adjust regularly and plan on adjusting these policies I've been talking about. The economic factors are definitely changing. I mean, just the cost of real estate here have changed your whole landscape as far as growth management.
So help us, help me. When we see Mr. Bailey's city manager's update and he has a slide that shows apartments, apartments in process, apartments on the ground, whatever, and the bottom number is 800 or whatever. That's out of context. It's just a number. What's the context that we should look at with regard to review and adjusting growth policies?
Well, that's a difficult one to answer. I think if you look at, if you have a regular review of your growth management policies, like every quarter or something, just have a little item, then it causes you to put all these together in your mind. That's all you can really do. Some cities, you're a little small to do this, have a, you know, a lot of cities have economic development departments or personnel. Some cities have growth management personnel and they make sure it's top of mind on, hey, we might want to look at changing our zoning ordinance on to encourage more multi-family right now because we've got a gap in our portfolio policy. Just, I don't know how to tell you mayor to do it technically. It's just something you need to have top of mind on growth management. This type of thing, these strategies I'm talking about require a commitment of your time, city staff resources, and budget resources. And so I think we could develop some ideas and of course Clinton and our planner over here are certainly what capable of setting up some type of tools for you to use to make sure you can go through those.
Mick, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead. During one of our joint sessions, we had a consultant review that in lieu of parking approach for an apartment. And I'm just thinking, attempting to think creatively here. Could we also take the same approach with parks and green spaces? Could we, they don't have the real estate to establish a park on their property. Could they contribute to a fund that we could use in another area of our city to establish a new park or expand or improve an existing park?
Yeah, you should require that.
We do that already. We have parkland dedication fees.
Yes, that's the parkland dedication fees you'll hear mentioned from time to time.
Okay, we do that. Yeah, we do that parkland dedication and just, I think it's, I don't have much money in the fund, but at some point you've got to spend it to develop. And that's expensive, as I mentioned, parks are expensive. Open space isn't cheap either. I mean, you think it might be because you're not really doing it. Well, no, it's really not. You're requiring, especially in a residential development, some level of open space. It costs somebody money and you got to make sure you do that reasonably.
We don't, I'm sorry Mick, on that point, we don't have any open space requirements, right? Beyond like pervious, impervious cover on development? We don't say 10% needs to be green space, right?
That's correct.
But when we do a development agreement, if we do one with a commercial or a residential, that'd be something we want to address.
Mick, on your comment about P and Z saying how Fredericksburg is changing made a comment half jokingly not too long ago that Fredericksburg's been changing since 1846.
Correct.
But today, the pace of change is so much different than it was 10 years ago, 20 years ago. And to this point about periodic review, maybe we need to do it sooner and more often than we have, would have in the past.
I would encourage you to do that. The other thing is because of your geographic location, things can happen very quickly with money and interest. It's happened to a lot of your neighbors and maybe happening now. I don't know. But I think that periodic review should be sped up and your growth management strategy should be on agenda item. And like I said, your professionals can give you tools to work through it. Let me go ahead with the next thing, Eric. Partnerships with neighboring communities. You know, it's really interesting what's happened in the Hill Country in the last few years that I've seen. And I'm not here all the time, but we have the Hill Country Alliance where there's a lot of shared information going on. There are employees involved in that. I'm the president of the Hill Country City Attorneys Association. We meet every quarter. And we just worked on the eclipse last week. And so regional growth strategies, and you guys talk to the people in Kerr County and Kendall County and Dripping Springs all the time and you should continue to do that. But the Hill Country is really being battered by growth. I shouldn't use that term. They're enjoying growth. Hill Country's enjoying growth, right? But it'd be easier to be overwhelmed and some of our neighbors have been overwhelmed. So setting up those type of formal or informal groups, partnering with neighboring communities can be very important for growth management. Dealing with water issues, dealing with lighting, you know, dark sky issues, dealing with a lot of transportation issues. Regional growth strategy, that isn't something that's native to Texas except through the council of governments process. Some states enjoy a lot of regional growth strategy issue, like some states on the eastern seaboard. But we really don't have a history of that except through the COGS. But I'd encourage you to keep doing those partnerships wherever they arise. Education and advocacy. Educate the public about the benefits of controlled growth. Actually, I shouldn't have used that word controlled. You know, that has some connotation. I mean, I'd be right. Managed growth and reasons behind the city's policies. Like you were stating earlier, Mayor, some people say, why don't you just say no? Why don't we create a moratorium? The more educated your public is, the more buy-in you get to maintain your community identity, whatever that is. So continued town halls, continued discussions at workshops, you know, the coffee with the city managers when a break, everybody ought to do that. It's very important because I mentioned earlier, one of the most important parts of all growth management is community engagement and involvement. Because they not only have to tell you what their interests are, which we're getting a lot through the comprehensive plan process, they ultimately have to pay for it and it's not free. So they have to be part of the program. Okay, now this is very important, not in Texas. I know, and I'm a member of the American Public Planning Association, very active group. We have Texas's Public Planning Association is probably the most active chapter in the nation. And with our planning colleagues throughout, and I go to all the international municipal lawyers meetings and meet with our colleagues everywhere. And they have tools in other states we don't have. So when your neighbor down the street says, well, you know, in Connecticut, we did this. Why, you know, why don't you guys do this? All right, I know in Oklahoma, we were able to do this. Come on, guys, do this. All right, I know in Oklahoma, we were able to do this, come on, guys, do this. Not in Texas. Texas is a pro-development state, and it will always be so. You know, when you get new county commissioners adopted, the first thing you want to do is say, let's go to the legislature and get some more power to regulate development. Well, I tell you what, it is not going to happen, ever. It never has since eighteen forty-five. We've been two constitutions, and they were both written to pro-development, and they're still there. And your legislature, that you saw this act this last time, the stuff they did, no, we're not going to get additional tools. We have some additional economic development tools, and we keep getting some more of those, that's not managing growth, that's probably just the opposite. Let me give you some examples. Development caps, to limit the number of new building permits that can be issued each year, you'll have constituents ask you this. This can control the rate of housing and commercial development. Illegal in Texas. You cannot say, we're only going to grant fifty commercial permits this year. And here's why. When that fiftieth permit is issued, and you tell the next applicant, sorry, now you have a moratorium. The moratoriums are specifically prohibited, except in very limited circumstances that we talked about before. And in that regard, moratoria on residential development in Texas can only last a hundred and twenty days, it can only be enacted after a very specific set of times for hearings and findings that your water and sewer is inadequate now to serve, not next year, now. There's additional allowance for commercial moratorium, but that's only if you're in the middle of revising your regulations, and that's still a hundred and twenty day limit. So in other states, the moratoria are more flexible, you can allow them, and you can have development caps in other states, not in Texas. That's just say no, Mayor. Can't do it. Environmental impact studies, we cannot require an environmental impact study on development. That was made even more clear at this last legislature, where the legislature passed a new statute that became effective September first, that we can't require a development study that the state doesn't require. We can't create our own. So, you know, you go to Colorado, you go to Montana, you go to a lot of places, Louisiana, anytime you want to build anything, you've got to do an environmental impact study, we cannot require it. Annexation policies, the legislature has removed our authority to annex. So in the past, cities with, to help fund growth management strategies and other reasons, could involuntarily annex properties to increase the tax base, and also to provide some development rules that otherwise wouldn't apply outside of the city limits, we no longer have that. As far as I can tell, we're the only state that does not. So those limits on, and then annexation statutes to limit home rule annexation were all adopted in the last three sessions, so my point about you're not going to get more development tools, actually.
Mick, this goes to development, but during the Chippewa event, Mayor Johnson City was there, and she was explaining that in the ETJ, as you go into Johnson City on the right-hand side, you'll see a very large apartment complex, and none of that was approved by the city, Johnson City. So what is the recourse? How do you manage something that's not approved? And now they're looking at, I think the number was a six million dollar water connection fee to these apartments, and what's the recourse the city has?
Well, if the city has the willingness to enforce, they can, they have the tools to do that. Anything that's not approved is illegal and is not entitled to operate, so you can seek an injunction in court to require it and to cease operation until they come in compliance. And very important, under state law, this is state statute, if your city is the utility service company for water and sewer, or just water, you can terminate their service until they come in compliance. Many cities don't have the willingness to do that, and to get into that fight. But all of this requires enforcement regime requires you to back it up, and requires you to explain, and requires you to commit resources to enforce, but all of this requires a willingness to go through these steps of all, and keep your attention on it and your focus on it. If you start backing off, that's when there's vulnerability to growth to overwhelm you. But cities have a lot of enforcement powers, sometimes you don't hear about it, and sometimes you don't see it because they don't like the will to get in the fight with that billionaire developer, or they don't, or they've worked something out instead of, you know, getting into the big fight to close it down. They have the authority, if somebody builds something contrary to your subdivision ordinance or in the city, your zoning ordinance, you can stop that. But again, it requires resources and it requires a willingness. So that's all I wanted to give you an overview and tell you some of the limitations we have, as well as the important parts of growth management that require constant attention to help slow the pace of development. That's what managed growth is about, slowing the pace so you can adjust to it, but also building in those quality of life elements and open space and parks and things that keep your community identity. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I guess, most of my career, I've been a litigator representing cities, about half of my work has been against developers in federal court. So fortunately, because it paid for my pay at college, but I've had to deal with these issues all over the state, it requires a lot of commitment for the city council and engagement of the community to make it effective. Any other questions right now? Of course, anytime we can give you information on a particular tool, or you might say, well, I know the city of Round Rock's doing this, why can't we do this? You know, can or not?
Thank you, Mick, this has been really helpful. Something was brought up at our one joint discussion with the county on development, and whether or not we had an interlocal agreement with the county to kind of regulate development in the ETJ. As I understand it, we don't have any kind of, are they fourteen forty-five agreements where?
We do have an interlocal agreement on plat review.
Okay, so, and I know the county can kind of leverage water as something to regulate growth, but is that something just on a day-to-day level, Joe Smith developer comes in and wants to develop in the ETJ, like, is the county talking with the city? Like, are we having good communication there? Do we need to work on that?
We do need to continue to work on it, with the county now having an engineer aboard, that's helping a lot. So we've already had a number of meetings with her, and hopefully, we've actually talked about updating that agreement. At this point, it's the state minimum that we were meeting, so we want to continue that And I did want to mention, Mick gave a similar presentation to Planning and Zoning a few weeks back, so hopefully that was helpful for them as well.
A little different because they're dealing directly with particular tools.
Mick, thank you, extremely helpful to me, thank you.
Well, it wasn't comprehensive, and we didn't go into anything in detail, but hoping to give you some ideas of the, there are many areas you have to pay attention to.
Anything else, counsel?
Thank you, Mick.
Mayor, could we make a plug for?
Absolutely.
The comprehensive plan. So we are in the kind of final stages of that, we expect a first draft in the next month or so, but the final community survey is open until September eleventh, and so far, we've had about four hundred responses to that, and in our previous surveys, we've had about a thousand, so we'd like to get that thousand mark again. And there's only six questions, but one of them in particular deals with regulating subdivisions and the types of things people might want to see. So it's very timely, comprehensive plan is wrapping up, and then as we get into the meat and potatoes of that, of what comes next, it'll be updating the subdivision ordinance and what types of incentives do we want to include for disincentives or restrictions, so all very, very timely. And then I would just remind you that we had that presentation from the HCA, Hill Country Alliance, on leading by example, and so that toolkit that they presented also very timely. So things that we are already doing, like historic preservation and lighting, but other things we could do, like stream setbacks, so lots of tools out there.
Thank you, Anna, so with regard to Mick's recommendation to be very engaged in community engagement, all of you here, and those of you who are watching otherwise, go to the city website, and the QR code is there, and also a hot link and all that. Okay, thank you, Anna. All right, item seven B is to continue discussion regarding the need for affordable housing. And I don't have anything new to contribute this week because I knew that we would get this presentation from Mick, which helps us to move forward on that, I think, helped me. But do any of you have any updates or any comments with regard to affordable housing issues?
I have a new topic, and I'd love to read an excerpt out of an article, if that's all right with you, it's not very long, but it's on upzoning, is that okay?
Hmm.
All right, so this is an article from Strong Towns, the organization, and this, Polly Rickert brought this to my attention, and it's about Auckland, New Zealand, where they looked specifically at upzoning. And so these are a couple excerpts I took from it. The goal was to loosen restrictive zoning rules that can increase housing supply and ultimately stabilize rents. In 2016, Auckland upzoned approximately three quarters of its residential land area under the Auckland Unitary Plan, legalizing duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes on single-family lots. The reforms not only produced more housing, but steadied rent growth. Part of what makes these reforms so successful is that they allowed incremental increases in housing density over a very large area, rather than concentrated upzoning to high densities in a limited number of places. This opens the playing field to smaller-scale developers working on sites that won't attract the interest of more conventional large-scale builders. It also avoids the speculative surges in land prices that can occur when housing demand is funneled into small areas of a city so that others can be kept under glass. For too long, housing policy has put investor returns and macroeconomic goals over the universal human need for shelter. Restrictive housing policies have also prevented people from collectively building the prosperous cities, prospering cities they desire. That's what incremental housing is a core campaign for Strong Towns. The next increment of development should be allowed by right in every neighborhood in America. Something that I think looks and feels like Fredericksburg is developing that, you know, that would be garage apartments, you know, a fourplex, a sixplex here and there, instead of massive developments on the edges outskirts of town. So something I'm very keen to dig into once we get the comprehensive plan squared away.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We'll go to item eight A, I want to mention that we have the Assistant City Manager Garrett Bond here this morning, because the city manager is finishing up the issues for our noon meeting with regard to the budget, so thank you, Garrett.
So as you mentioned, we will have another budget work session today at noon up at City Hall in the fire training room. Then on September thirteenth, we have another special call meeting, it's a work session at six PM at the Cardinal Room, that will be the last, potentially the last budget public hearing. Looking ahead for the September nineteenth regular council meeting, the city manager will give the monthly update again, and included in that will be a discussion on renewable energy. We'll continue the discussion on affordable housing. We'll also have adoption of the fiscal year 2024 budget, along with the 2023 tax rate. We will also be considering a number of revised fees, including the RV park and potentially a few others that we're still working with Mick's group on. We've also got consideration of an extension of the janitorial services contract for next year. Development-wise, this is a topic that will go before the Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow, but it's a request for a conditional use permit relating to a limited restaurant use of Eight-Eleven North Lano. And then looking further out, we don't have dates for a lot of these, but a large number of topics coming before you. As I mentioned to Randy the other day, you know, looking into October, we'll have a large number of items related to the current proposed budget, so any questions about any of those items? Looks like another busy month.
Jeanette, you wanted to speak on this issue?
Okay, hopefully, I have a graphic that I'd like to show. Future agenda items, yeah, that has to do with the taxes and the budget hearings and stuff coming up. I've sent different things, information, and important points, I feel, that I haven't heard anything back on yet, but an honest look at the data does not support any increase in taxes, but rather a serious tax reduction. In fact, realistically, the council should be starting at the no revenue tax rate and work towards a budget that is below that rate. For years, taxes have far outpaced the population growth and the ability of many to bear the increasing burden, including myself, in these times of economic challenges and inflation that eat away the family paycheck. It is all the more urgent for the city to exercise responsible fiscal restraint to alter the current trajectory. Now, I thought I'd give you a graphic here, but I took the, from the city website, the adopted budget amounts for each year, from two fourteen up to two twenty-four. And I also graphed the, if you take the population growth plus inflation, and those, what those are, and I thought it was amazing that, I didn't know, Annette was going to speak what she did, I really appreciate that. So basically, the budget is way beyond the population growth plus inflation rate, and that is just not right. We've all felt it, we feel our, basically, our taxes have doubled in ten years. My wages have not doubled in ten years. And of course, we're feeling all the things coming down now with the grocery, the gas, you know, everything else, we're getting squeezed. So the city has a responsibility, yes, to provide services and take care of the people, but it also has a huge responsibility to do a responsible budget. If you look at this, this is, this is wrong, this is clearly wrong. The population growth plus the inflation only went up, I think I had here thirty, thirty-six point eight percent. Our budget has grown a hundred and eleven percent. It has doubled, that's why the property taxes have doubled. You want to preserve the neighborhoods, you want to help the people, you talked about the affordable housing, I can tell you that these taxes are making a huge difference in the people's ability to afford their housing, to take care of their families, and that should be on the top of your minds as you put together this budget. And we brought this before, but when you look at it visually, it is stunning. So basically, the budget should not exceed population growth plus inflation, in fact, you can even go below that, and I would call you to direct the city to really start at the no revenue tax rate and work down, like, try to go ten percent below. Other cities are doing it, I sent a couple links to y'all with my comments here, and I'll also email them to you as well. But people are doing it, and you can, you've got a big gap that needs to be corrected. So I'll leave that with you as you go to your budget meeting today. As you go to your budget meeting today, please start letting the city know that you work for the people and that you're going to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and counsel, I will say we have some additional data to review during the budget discussion. A lot, a lot more detailed breakdown of those.
Just wanted to make sure that everybody watching knows that that was a graphic brought by the speaker, is not a city graphic. All right, any further discussions or comments or anything on, we, we've fulfilled the agenda this morning? Anything further? All right, well, then we will adjourn and see you all at noon. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.